City Council, may we have roll call, please?
Council members, Devine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Jarian?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Sonanya?
Here, may we have the report, please?
Agenda for the August 5th, 2014 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, July 31st, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item before you today is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Director of Finance, continued from July 29th, 2014 regarding amending chapters 13.04, 13.08, 13.12, 13.16, and 13.28 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to Glendale Water Power, Glendale Water and Power water rates and charges. At A is a resolution setting forth rates and charges for Glendale Water and Power water service. A1 is 444, 4% annual increases. Two is 044, 3% annual percentage increases. Three is 443, 3% annual increases. Four is 433, 3% annual increases. Five is 334, 4% annual increases. Six is 333, 4% annual increases. Seven is 333, 3% annual increases. Eight is 344, 4% annual increases. And nine is 244, 4% annual increases, other options. B is resolution delaying imposition of any applicable drought rate for a period of six months for the effective date of ordinance number 5835 relating to water rates and charges for Glendale Water and Power customers. C is a resolution authorizing the calculation and issuance refunds for fire line overcharge. And following all that, there is closed session items at the completion.
Thank you, Mr. Choa.
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving us one more opportunity to explain the proposed rate plan and rate structure fix. And I mentioned both of those items because I think part of the confusion that took place in your last session was that in May, as part of the budget, one of the budget study sessions, we spent a good deal of time on this issue and really focused in on the rate structure fix, and then after tackled the rate plan. We were able to, in my estimation and recollection, to a point where when the council allowed us to move forward with the rate plan and the Prop 218 notice for what was then 5444, as far as the staff was concerned based on council direction, we were moving forward with the rate structure fix. So I will endeavor to go quickly, but not too quickly, through just a handful of slides to reset the entire discussion, and then certainly, as the city clerk had read into the record, be able to provide you with an overview of various scenarios. Recognizing that the scenario at this point in time, the only scenario that we would recommend to you is a scenario that leads you to a point where at the end of this rate plan, you end up in positive cash, whereas today you are negative $9 million in cash. We need to get to that point going forward, so.
Mr. Choa, may I ask?
Yes, please.
Because it's not in the slides that I could see. What happens with our bond rating depending on what we pick?
The folks that bought our bonds, the underwriter that facilitated that transaction, all had the understanding that we had a rate plan that had that final year 5%, and the understanding that we would move forward with continuous revenue enhancements as necessary. To the extent that we don't, whatever form it takes, if it somehow does not conform to what is desired to deliver the amount of bond debt coverage, well, they are going to look at that with a very jaundiced eye. At the very least, they would downgrade our rating. If we were to do absolutely nothing and end up in a $15 to $17 million negative cash situation, my guess is that there would be any number of actions that I would defer to the city attorney that would take a legal flavor to them.
Thank you.
So we're looking to do two things. Fix the water, the problem associated with the faulty water rate structure that was part of the Willdan COSA, and then adopt a new four-year revenue plan. So again, in the spring of 2012, we had moved forward with that COSA. Again, at that time, we did a rate increase and we did a rate restructure. By the following year, we had understood that the rate increase was not generating revenue in the manner in which it was envisioned. The reason why it took us a while to figure that out is because revenue overall was up. We were way overcharging on the fire lines because of faulty data from Willdan. And water sales were up. The economy is doing a little bit better. We're selling more units of water. But the impact on single-family customers and on multifamily customers in particular was not being felt hardly at all. On the multifamily side, as you saw in the slides last time, their rates actually went down. On the single-family side, the typical single-family rates that we were showing as kind of an apples and apples comparison, that first year their rate was flat, maybe down a few cents, and then inched up in the subsequent two years, but not nearly what it was supposed to do under the rate restructure pursuant to that COSA. So how did that happen? As I said, they got the, the COSA was wrong, looking at modeling bi-monthly data and then applying a monthly structure to it, because we reset your rate, I'm sorry, we reset your bill every month. So if you use a lot of water in one month, you're not being penalized over the two-month, the two-month billing period. So we reset that. They looked at two-month usage, presumed it was one-month usage, and built their tiers off of that. There basically was no QA QC in their process. The same time, they under, in under-collecting the single-family and multifamily revenue, they had so woefully underestimated the spectrum of fire line services that were in existence, they basically allocated the cost of 1,200 fire lines over a fraction of that number, I think it was 400 fire line services. So the rates for those known fire lines, known under the Willdan COSA, were significantly higher. The end of the day, we ended up generating about $9 million less in revenue than what was expected. The, and that's all reflected in the year-end cash. And the tale of the tape is that by 1314, the unrestricted cash reserves were at negative 10 million. Under that COSA, under the Willdan COSA, they should have been negative 1.4. So we have to fix the rate structure. And in fixing the rate structure, there are a handful of things that are critically important to us as the city of Glendale and GWP. We have to meet Prop 218 requirements. There's been a lot said about that, but not a lot of much value in terms of what the legal impact would be in your decision-making. We need to get back to positive cash flow. We need to support a conservation message, have drought rates and what have you. The idea of making sure that it is fair, balanced by what is able to be administered is critically important to us. And of course, we want to keep the rates as low as we possibly can, but make sure that the revenue stream is stable and has some elasticity to it, so we don't repeat the errors of the past. So as I, just to summarize, you know, we looked at the fire lines, fixing that, looking at the single-family and multifamily under collections, ensuring that the commercial rates were equalized, they're paying what they should be paying, and you see how that's recast in this new COSA, and then making good on the negative cash that is there in GWP water. And reimbursing those overcharges to the fire line customers. So what we showed you in May, what we've looked at before, and I think at this point, the item that has the most discussion from the last couple of meetings was here, in single-family customers. So this is the first-year impact and compacted or compounded over five years. It goes from 7.5 compounded is, I said compacted, I'm sorry, compounded is 8.6. This is for all single-family customers. This is for the large meters, the small meters, the high users, the efficient users, the typical users, everybody. When you look at revenue from beginning to end, you see that level of increase. If you were to only fix the rate structure, you see what ends up happening. Here, this is a reflection, this is our capital investment. We have money from the bonds that were sold, and we're spending those monies, and then we get to zero cash on hand for capital investment. When you look at our net income, we're still operating in the red over the life of the plan. When you look at the unrestricted cash reserves, we start to make some headway and then fall back down. That's if you only fix the structure. And that's why I think, looking back at the Willdan COSA, that period of time, it was a rate restructure to provide some elasticity and make sure it's Prop 218 compliant, as well as a revenue plan increase.
What does that mean, to only fix the structure? Does that mean going to the faulty Willdan COSA and implementing it properly?
Going, eliminating the Willdan COSA and only doing the COSA itself, those structural fixes that are going to increase single-family rates by a percentage, only to ensure that they are paying their fair share. Not doing any of the 4444 or the 333, any of those things. Just fixing the, just fixing the COSA, fixing the rate structure itself. Arguably, the council, as you recall from the budget study session, you have very little latitude in this particular discussion, because now that you know that the COSA is faulty, you need to fix it. If you don't fix it, you are, you're running the risk of being sued and being sued successfully by somebody that says you're operating under a wrong cost of service analysis pursuant to Prop 218. So again, our fault was that as we moved through the budget study session very quickly, and that's, we take full responsibility for that, the idea was, we're moving forward on the COSA fix because we know we need to. Let's transition, let's pivot and talk about the revenue enhancement. But again, that COSA, just fixing the COSA alone is not enough. You won't have any money for pay-go capital, meaning you won't be self-funding capital investment, and all you need to do is look at DWP's problems out in West LA over the last few days to understand you need to invest and not just rely on debt service and on bond indebtedness. The net income impacts, the unrestricted net, the net cash, you're still negative, not $6.9 million at 1819. And it's important to note, more to Mr. Weaver's question earlier, we failed to meet our minimum debt service coverage in 1718. That is problematic. It's highly problematic for us. But again, that's only if all we did was fix the structure, which is why we also need to have the additional revenue. And that is the rate plan that we often refer to, the rate structure, the rate plan. So the rate plan as it stands today, that council had given us direction on two meetings ago, was 4444. The 4 is moved up to September 1st, 2014. The 5% that was part of the original COSA rate plan that was due in January of 15 goes away. Instead, we have this 4% in July 1 of 15, July 1 of 16, July 1 of 17. Compounded, those are 16.9%. I think they come out to 17%. I had showed you 18% a couple of, or last week, because, and I apologize, we were looking at 5444, compounded is 18%. We do have a lot of information out there, and so we do our best to corral it, and I do apologize for any confusion.
So let me stop you there. So just to confirm, this 4444 increase is a system-wide increase, and individual rate payers or individual classes of rate payers will be impacted differently? Is that correct?
That is not correct. The, once you fix, once you fix the rate structure, 4% hits everybody wherever they are. Your 4, your rates will go up 4% once we fix the rate structure.
Okay, last week we were looking at numbers for single-family homes closer to 27%.
So to your point, within these classes of customers, we have different service levels. So on single-family, if you are a typical single-family customer, you have the 3/4-inch meter, you have, you use 19HCF a month, this number is actually 5 something, 5.2. If you are a smaller meter still, it'll probably be less. If you're a larger meter, it's going to be in this range. But again, this number, where we did not explain it very well, this is the entire class. And I know the terminology does get confusing. This is what you will see, if you just looked at revenue from the front end to the back end on the single-family class, it's going to go up by this factor in the first year, and this element of the overall revenue generated gets compounded to this level here. Once you fix those rates, however, once you fix that structure, as we increase rates, it is much more uniform and easier to understand. I will, and I see where you're going, and I'll get there with another slide that'll break that down a little bit more. When you talk about 4444, what the impact is, you have, you have about $4 to $5 million per year, 9.7 million in the life of this rate plan, in this four-year plan, beyond the capital money that you have, the debt financed money that you have for capital investment, you'll have about $9.7 million to spend on your everyday types of capital replacement, removing line, removing, exchanging out valves, all the things, the everyday kinds of maintenance that we do. And that way, the benefit is that whenever you use debt financing, it's only for that extraordinary type of, you know, once in a generation replacement. All the stuff we do year in, year out will be in that $4 to $5 million range. So we have that present. You also have positive net income of 3.9 million, and you end with $4.4 million in positive cash reserves. Not, it's not the council policy that was adopted, but it's a lot better than where we are today. So that just summarizes 3.9 in.
In cash, I'm sorry to interrupt, cash reserves are currently what, down 9 million?
Negative 9.
Negative 9. So we would be, not only would we pay off the debt, but we'd be plus, positive 4.4?
You'd be, you'd be 40%, 33% of the way to your adopted policy reserves.
Okay.
So this looks back at that typical single-family customer, which is the 3/4-inch meter, 19HCF. These are, these are actual numbers. So we are looking, this is the actual, this is what it should have been. So this, the rate did go up, but it didn't go up nearly as much as it should have gone up for, on a monthly basis. It should have gone up another $5, $5.39, and it did not. It did go up, just not as much as we needed it to. The rate plan that we're proposing show is 7882. So here is just the rate. If all you did was fix the structure, which again, you have very little latitude. You need to do that in order to have a COSA that's compliant with Prop 218. That's this line here. This line here is the rate fix plus the rate plan, the additional 4%. This is, this number is 4% higher than this number. The idea being, once you fix the rates, the rate increases, the rate plan becomes much more straightforward and standard, and you can see how it moves on over the life of that plan. So again, just to summarize, 2245, we would lose that 5%. We would do 4444, the compounded rate is 17, 30% total between those two, separate and apart from the rate fix. So this is, if you recall where we started, 55444, council said, no, that's too much. You, you actually, in the course of the budget study session, if you recall, said, we like 4444, but in order to give us some flexibility pursuant to Prop 218, when we had to send out the notice, staff actually go forward with 5444, and then we can, we can downgrade from there if need be. Because as you know, under the Prop 218 notice, that sets the ceiling, you can never go beyond that. So you gave us a little bit of latitude with the 5444, but this was the number that was discussed. While I'm here, let me show you the 27% that was, that had been brought up previously. The 27% plus this 13% that had been paid equals 40%. Rates are going up 40%. Again, on the aggregate for all single-family customers, this is the number, the 27% for your typical single-family customer. For this person, that is, that combined increase, the old rate plan, the faulty rate plan, the new rate plan, plus the rate fix, is the combined total is about 35, 35.8% is what the increase is, all in, everything over the life of those two rate plans. So as you see, this is a slide we showed you, I believe, last, last time, and it does include the rate structure fixes, as well as the proposed rate plan for the entire class. So to the councils, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I will bring up, there's a slide that we have in the parking lot that shows the differential between a small meter, 3/4-inch meter, large, the inch meter, and it gets to that differentiation within the classes, the categories that you were referencing. Where we are today, what we're here for today is, is those two questions. The rate structure fix, and if we do the rate structure fix, which rate plan? Now, this is rather small, but you have the handout. 4444, again, we took out the 55444, council was not going to do that. We have now taken out the 5444 because council has indicated you're not willing to do that. So today, we are at 4444, which gets you, it's 218 compliant, debt service coverage, about $9.7 million in pay-go in the life of this rate plan, meaning the last two years of this rate plan, after the bond money goes away because we've spent it on capital, you're still spending $5 million a year roughly on capital. Your negative, your net cash is small, and it grows to about 3.9, so it doesn't grow tremendously, but at least it's healthy. You go down from, we dropped down to 6.5 in negative cash to 1.9 negative cash, 1.3, 4.4. I would argue that the 4.4 is important, although we don't have a reserve right now. We do not. I think it's important to have that reserve because you're also voting on drought rates. And to the extent that you want to suspend, we're recommending that you suspend the first six months of those drought rates until we really understand what the state of California is intending to do by way of its water policy on many, many different fronts.
Have we done an analysis of the impact of the drought rates on the actual rates?
Yes, sir. We can show you what the actual rates are, but the net impact is that because the drought, the conservation, mandatory conservation is going to drive down our sales, the purpose of the drought rates is to prop up revenue so that it stays level. So if we were to suspend the drought rates for an entire year, I believe that we lose about $2 million in cash. So for six months, it's about $1 million in cash. So if you were to vote on suspending the drought rates today for six months, this number at the end, generally speaking, this number at the end isn't 4.4, it's 3.4. If you were to spend them for a full year, it's really 2.4. Now, if you want.
Why does that happen? Why, why the impact on the bottom line is so negative?
Because you're.
Because it discourages water use?
Because it's, you are discouraging water use, which is discouraging water sales, and so we're not getting the revenue in the front door. So the purpose of the drought rates is to increase the cost of water so that our revenue stream remains stable.
Right, and?
And so if we don't prop up that cost because we're going to suspend those drought rates, the price supports, if you will, for the drought rates, if we're suspending those, well, then that's just water revenue right off our bottom line, to the tune of about $2 million a year if you were, if you were to suspend them for a full year.
So let me ask you once again, drought rates, the intended, intended purpose of the drought rates is to prop up revenue as opposed to, to prevent or discourage use of water?
Certainly the demand management, both. The demand management is important. If I charge you more for water.
From a perspective of, you know, the drought, I mean, from the perspective of the ecology, we're looking to save water, right?
Yes.
And the impact of that is that since the rates are higher, the usage of water is lower, we end up making a little less money and much less, much more water, much less water is getting used. Is that, is that?
Less water is being used, but that's also because of the restrictions that you're putting out there. The no watering more than three times, the no fountains, you're putting mandatory conservation on folks, which is driving them towards using less, plus the demand management function of increasing the price of water also contributes to that. But whether we sell one gallon of water or a billion gallons of water, we have a fixed cost for the infrastructure, for the people that we have as a regular crew. And as you know, our folks are, we have fewer people today than we've had in many, 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 many years, and so I don't know that we're going to get any skinnier in terms of what our costs are. So we need to make sure that we can at least cover costs, and in an environment where we are negative almost $9 million, 8.8 million, we don't have that luxury.
So our costs are fixed, and I get that. So what are, six months from now, what are the additional rates that our?
The drought rates?
Yeah, what are they?
We can pull those up. I think we have them in the parking.
Let's pull them, because I think we're.
Let me be clear, we have to vote on those in six months. We don't vote on those now.
I know, but we are voting on a, on a rate increase now, so I think we should have a global picture of how much these rates are potentially going up in six months from now.
Most definitely.
It's the right thing to do.
Vote yes or no.
We are in a drought.
Well, but if, if we can, if we can get through the rate plan.
Okay, let's look at this, but let's make sure that's.
Sure, no, well, you have to, one of the items on the agenda is to vote on the suspension of those drought rates. So we are going to, we have information for you on those drought rates. So if we can get through the various rate plans, so you see what was up last time, the 4444, then you, we've basically just continued to ratchet it down, 4443, 4433, 43. And so you get that idea. You had suggested, I believe, the 333, and then we also went to 2444. The idea being that if you are going to fix the rate plan, the rate structure, rather, in this first year of a four-year rate plan, do you need relief for the rate payer in that first year? So you could argue 2444 gives you relief, 3444 gives you a little less relief, and then 4444. So you can follow along, and I would encourage the councils, take a minute look through here, cash reserves, what they are, and then, of course, the all-important bottom line, going down from the 4.4 million, we do bounce back under the 2444 to the tune of 1.2 million positive cash at the end of the plan. But again, that limits your flexibility with respect to looking at some of the other things that may come up, not the least of which is drought rates and the suspension thereof, but also any issues where you may need to dip into reserves and you don't wish to dip into GWP's other reserve accounts. So by all means, I would, I would encourage the council to have this discussion, and then we can move into drought rates and what the impact is there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Choa. We know that in the near term, geologically speaking, this region will be hit by another major earthquake. All of the flat land of Glendale is on a luvial plane, and most of the old housing from 1910 up into the 30s, 40s, until we started building out the hillsides, is on that plain. A significant geological event, seismic earthquake, tend to break up number of streets, bridges, electrical sewer, storm drain, and water lines that are sitting under there. If we have not reserved significant amount of funds through these rate increases, what happens if we're in a deficit in terms of reserves? Where's the money going to come from? Our bond ratings are going to suffer if we haven't done it. Where are we going to borrow the money, and are we going to pay it costly? There's no magic pot out there. I mean, we're nothing compared to LA to lead up every penny there is in the world. So what would happen? I mean, I feel we need reserves for those realistic problems that are going to occur within the next few years.
If, if, you know, we're talking Katie bar the door because it's the big one, I mean, my guess is that, and I guess my expectation would be that we would be using general fund reserves as well as any other cash on hand to pay for ongoing services and maintenance. You don't want to do that, as you point out, that's the purpose of having a reserve dedicated for sewer, or electric, or water, or any of your other utilities. The flip side to that, however, is that at this point, we're in negative cash. So that, we don't even have that luxury.
I know, but that's what I'm getting at. As I remember, over the course of the years, radios replacement, there was no reserve fund. I can go down a list of all the things that councils in the past have not put aside reserves for, and we had to build those reserves over the years in order to do replacement, different things. Now, this is major. If we lose our water lines and stuff, and people don't have potable water to drink, now they're going to be in here at our door. How short-sighted were we not to do something about it? LA has been criticized in the past for that. I don't want to get a rate increase. Oh, no, no, if I have to make that kind of decision, people are going to vote me out of office, you know, but I can't think that way. We've got to build the reserves because there will be a major earthquake. I mean, fires, yeah, we had two today already. We had two today already. But a major earthquake, it could potentially be bad. I still remember in the '71 quake, sitting through all the ones since that time. And the next one, there's a lot of earthquake zones running through this city, and we're going to really have the ruptures underground. I know we're trying to do the worst lines as we can, but you need money to be prepared for the worst.
Can I ask a question? The GWP water main break they just had at UCLA, do we have any ballpark what that's going to cost them?
Multi-
Considering they're going to have to pay for cars that have been destroyed, and a gym at UCLA.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, what we're hearing is, interestingly enough, the 20 million gallons of water is the least of the cost of the problem that they have to deal with. But UCLA has reported tens of millions of dollars and a growing number that they anticipate building the city of Los Angeles.
The point is, forget earthquake. One water main break, you're, you'd need 20, 30 million dollars in reserves if you have it in the wrong place.
It depends on the conditions there. I think the water break was on the uphill side and went down.
Yeah.
UCLA, we're not going to have that similar.
We're not going to have that, but we could easily have one that's 2, 3 million dollars.
Oh, yes, easily.
And we don't have that in reserves. And even these structures, these rate structures, some of them don't even get you enough in reserves to cover one water main break.
And if it breaks, every home that has any damage, whatever, will sue the city of Glendale for not maintaining the system. And how can we answer to that? Everything we're talking about is on video now, and they will use it in a court of law against us.
Thank you. And these are very important issues to keep in mind. Every year, we discuss the budget. Every year, we negotiate with our unions. These are key issues that we should keep a track of on a timely manner as a preventative measure to depleting our reserves, and not as a measure that we have to deal with ex post facto. So, Mr. Ochoa, why don't we go on with the explanation of the rates?
Well, I mean, at this point, sir, I would entertain either questions or suggestions from council on any of these rate plans that you see. I would, if you're wondering, you know, what the zero rate plan is, we've shown you if you just do the rate structure fix. We would not recommend that, and as I've indicated previously, a rate plan that leaves you in negative cash as staff, we simply cannot recommend that to you.
That's the 3333.
At this point, it comes close. It comes awfully close, but we need to get to a point where we're in positive cash. And again, to the extent that the council desires flexibility to do other things, then you need just a little bit more to give yourself that flexibility in future years.
I still want to see the rates as impacted by the drought, drought rates. I know that that's not, it may or may not happen today, or may or may not happen in six months, but-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can give you that verbally. This is something that's in the resolution and in the COSA. What we put into effect was a flat rate depending on which phase of the conservation effort the council approved. Currently, we're in Phase 2. That's a flat rate of 75 cents per HCF per 100 cubic feet of water for every customer. So they will pay that surcharge, a flat surcharge during Phase 2. Now, remember, in Phase 2, the conservation goal, the curtailment target, is 20%. So that's what we based our calculations on. Now, each successive phase that the council approves, and as you know, those become more and those are tighter and tighter with regards to conservation. 30% is stage 3, and that's $1.30 per HCF. For every customer, we'll pay an additional surcharge of $1.30. Keep in mind, that surcharge is connected directly to the declaration. So once that declaration has been withdrawn by the council, that fee goes away. That surcharge goes away. Stage 3, again, you're getting more serious in the drought situation. The curtailment goal is 40%. Based on that, we calculated and came up with a $2.02 across-the-board surcharge. And of course, you get to the last stage, it's a 50% curtailment goal, and that's the most expensive where you would be at $3.03 per HCF. Again, that's a flat rate.
In the first stage, you said 75 cents?
75 cents, HCF for all customers.
That's 20%?
75 cents.
Oh, there's no percentage attached to it?
No, no, it's just a flat surcharge.
What is 100 HCF? What is that? I mean, how much water is that?
Do we know in gallons? 748 gallons.
And how much water?
And that's approximately the amount, give or take, that a person uses each day.
Each day.
That's kind of, if you remember that graph we showed you, and that, that's a single-family home that would, I should say, that's a single-family home with 2.8 people in it, that includes irrigation. So you've got a pretty large component there. It's much less in a multifamily where you wouldn't have the irrigation component. It would be, you would have less usage, just the personal usage is what we would, what we projected.
So just Stage 2 would result in an additional at least $20 on an average household? Is that?
No, I don't think it's-
19 HCF is the typical.
Is the typical, and 75 cents on 19, so yes, yeah, you'd be under-
19 H, well, I'm sorry, I got confused. I thought 100 HCF was the daily-
Well, no, we're using 19 HCF as our typical. And again, typical, trying to find a customer that has the most commonality for us. We could give you hundreds of examples, but we look for the most commonality, and that's where that at. So you take that 19 HCF and times that by an additional 75 cents. That's the surcharge part that would be on a monthly basis with a typical customer.
So we're looking at how much, Mr. Najarian?
Well, 19 times 7, 1425.
Right.
Per month, not per billing cycle, per month.
Right.
Per month, that's right.
That's a typical user's monthly, that's a typical monthly use.
And the, let me just follow that thought. The purpose of that is to make the water more expensive so that we reduce it by 20% over our non-drought.
That's correct. And if you look at some of the scenarios, you can, if you do conserve, you'll keep your rates somewhere right, level with where you're at now. If you don't conserve any, your rates are obviously going to go up a lot more because you're going to be using a lot more water.
So, yeah, if you reduce by the target amount, you're not paying that extra increase.
Actually, on the typical, you probably pay just a little bit less than you would in your normal, in your normal category. But again, if you don't conserve at all, you're zero. You don't, you know, if you do 10%, it's a little less, but if you do zero, then you won't go up at all. I mean, you'll go up significantly, excuse me. So that's that disincentive for you built in as well. And you may recall, one of the things in the presentation a couple of weeks ago, I'd indicated we had looked at a couple of different ways to cover our fixed costs. Currently, 70, 30, that's the split. 70 is water sales, 30% is fixed costs. When we changed that dynamic to 60, 40, which under the COSA was doable from a legal standpoint, the impact was significant to all users. And then that would be ongoing. So we decided that the best way to try to cover our costs during these periods of where our sales are down was to put in a direct surcharge that is tied only to the conservation effort. As soon as it's pulled, it goes away, and that we don't leave people with that 60, 40 split and that additional cost for the duration of the rate plan.
Okay, two more questions, either Mr. Ochoa or Mr. Zern. Let's assume for a second that we prevail in our lawsuit against Willdan, and we have, I don't know, policy limits recovery, best-case scenario. What happens with that money? Will that money be used to, I mean, are residents going to feel the impact of us having recovered some of that money which is causing some of these problems in the first place?
No, that's a great question, because if, what we have heard from the residents, what we have said back to them is that we would find a way to have that benefit directly to our residents. So council would have a policy choice to make. Do you put that money into the reserve, and so the, your reserves go up by that percent, by that amount of money? And so any future rate plan is not as aggressive as these rate plans are because you're getting to where you want to be. Do you provide some kind of credit to residents? There's lots of different things that we could do, all that would be subject to legal review in the COSA, but the idea being that the, any money that we would get back from Willdan would go back directly to the benefit of the rate payers, but it really would be council's discretion.
But there are mechanisms to implement that kind of thing?
Yes, sir, there are.
And last question, where is the money that is going towards refunds for the fire line overcharge is going to come from?
That's coming out of GWP water. I mean, that's part of this rate plan.
It's built into the rate plan here. So this is after, this includes, yeah, all the numbers you see for whatever the scenario is includes the repayment of the overcharge.
Any questions, Mr. Weaver?
I want to clarify a point on timing. I remember many moons ago, I sat up here, and we were discussing during the course of the year, spending a couple million dollars on doing work on Honolulu up in Montrose. I was against it because it had not been put into the budget. I said, no, if you want to discuss something like that, when it comes to the budget cycle, we'll look at the priority of that compared to everything else, and if they vote to do it, we'll put it in. Now, you made the comment, why has this issue not, why was it not built into the budget? And I think it's all in the timing. Did you have the results, and could you have factored a rate increase? I mean, it has to be in the timing issue somehow, that we couldn't put it into the budget for us to adopt. Is that true?
With respect to the actual just rate, timing of the rate increase?
Yeah.
Well, the original COSA plan had us on a calendar year basis, and so what we're recommending to you is to really move back towards a fiscal year basis. I guess I'm not understanding the ultimate question.
Well, I think, Mr. Weaver, misunderstood my-
I think the mayor is saying, you know, if we knew how much this is going to cost, whatever one we pick, we should have put it into the budget and voted it in. Is that what you're saying?
No, that was not what I was saying.
I'm sorry.
But I'll be happy to clarify. I mean, I don't want to get into this too much because I think we've seen the numbers, we're all adults.
No, you don't have to get into it at all. I'm just trying to clarify.
Right. The point I was, the point I was making was that the way to prevent these kinds of reserve shortages, or, I mean, the absence of reserve or debts from accumulating is by preventing them from happening as opposed to dealing with them once they've already happened.
Absolutely.
I mean, we can say, oh, that's what we're doing now. No, that's not what we're doing now. We're now trying to eliminate something that has happened in the past over time.
Mm-hmm.
So the way to, again, to deal with this issue is to never have this issue in the first place, by dealing it before it happens. That's all I, that's all I was saying.
That was the whole point of the Willdan study. It just was flawed. I mean, the idea was to get the reserves into positive territory, and we under-collected. That was what we were doing at that point. We didn't sit there and say, hey, let's not, let's run the reserves down so that another council has to deal with it. That's, that's what we did, and we wouldn't be in this situation if the Willdan COSA hadn't been flawed.
Yeah.
Did we have a positive reserve before the faulty Willdan report?
No, sir. I mean, that's part of the story is in, is in 2010, 11, we found ourselves in that scenario.
And that's, that's all I wanted to hear. I mean, that's the point I'm making, that we had this problem before the faulty COSA report, so.
So I appreciate that, and you're certainly correct to the extent that we're playing catch-up with a $9 million deficit. The preventative measure that should have been taken by this council, or those that sat up here, were to make consistent and regular water rate increases over the mid-2000s, which the council did not do. We did not do it because we did not think it was going to be fair to the residents, and we were very reluctant and loath to make those sort of regular increases. And that, and that reluctance, that aversion to making those regular rate increases is clearly what got us into that spot. And now we are behind the eight ball. We don't have much room to maneuver. Had we been looking at a graph that said we've got a double-digit, double-digit million in reserves, it's a completely other ballgame, completely new ballgame. But we are in critical financial straits caused by years of non-revenue production of net losses year after year, multiple years. And unfortunately, that's the problem we're in.
Jerry, you're exactly right. That's like the fee structure that we had for years, where we'd go years without adjusting the fees and slam it to the public. Now, we're evaluating those fee structures all the time, so if we increase any, it's an incremental small number, and that's where we got to get to on these rate structures so it never happens again. Exactly the same.
It's very easy for council members to say, I want to be the good guy, and I'm not going to raise rates, and then councils like ours end up in the situation where they have to raise rates. And, you know, to not do so just puts someone in the future in even more dire circumstances.
Yeah.
So we have no more questions. I'll just state my position. I do want to be a good guy and not raise any rates, but I'm going to recommend that we do raise the rates by 3, 3, 3, 3, because that's, I hope it is bearable for our residents. At the same time, it takes us almost entirely out of the 9 point, oh, I'm sorry, 8.9 million or 9 million debt that we're currently in, brings us up to negative $200,000 debt, if that's correct. And in four years from now, we or whoever else is on this dais can revisit this issue and can, I agree with Mr. Najarian, that the right way to go about this is to keep in mind that cost of providing a service is constantly going up, and we should keep up with that, and so should the residents, and revisit the issue in four years. I think, I think that's the fair thing to do. Again, that's, that was my position last week, so.
We have cards, by the way?
Do we have?
We have cards from the public?
We didn't open the public hearing.
We have none. We're not going to open public hearing.
Probably were happening.
Nor do we have any cards.
But, so where is the adjusted rate structure that we, the correction we have to do, is that 1? It's not 1 through 9?
No, what, those are all the different options that would, between 3, 3, 3, 4, 4, 4.
So will we move 1 alone or 1 with?
1 with 1 of those, whichever one, also preference at the end of the day.
Okay. Now, I don't agree to a negative balance. I think I made that pretty clear. The bigger the reserve, I think, is the better, but I'll do what my colleagues think, other than 3, 3, 3, 3. It's a negative. Not going there. We have to have reserves built up.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'll move 4, 4, 4, 4.
Well, can I, I'll, let me just make a comment, and I'll second your motion, but I want to confess something, which is that I sometimes watch reality television. There, I've said it. I like watching Shark Tank. Sometimes when, on Tuesdays, when we get out early, I can get home and watch a little Shark Tank. And I like watching The Profit. I don't know if any of you have seen that. It's a billionaire who runs around helping failing businesses. And I watch Ramsey's Kitchen Nightmares, where he helps failing restaurants. And, you know, there's, there's one commonality that runs on pretty much every single episode of all of those shows. It's that they walk into a business that is failing, and they have to make hard choices to bring the restaurant or the business back into solvency. And a lot of the time, maybe 80% of the time, and Shark Tank, it's the same thing. They're selling a product, it's selling really well, I've sold 20,000 units, and I'm $800,000 in debt. So when they start delving into what the problem is, it usually ends up something where somebody's making something for $10, and they cost them $5 to ship it, and they're paying their employees whatever they're paying them, and they're selling it for $7. So they're losing money. And in the end, they realize that they have to get their costs of making their widget in line with their sales. Now, we here don't even need to make a profit. We don't make a profit. We try to break even all the time. We just want to cover our costs and deliver our water to the residents, but we're in a situation where we have not been charging enough to cover our costs. And it doesn't take a genius to say that you will fail. Eventually, you will go out of business, or you're going to have to do something really draconian. And to me, it is fiscally irresponsible to enact a rate structure that either charges too much to where we're making money, because we shouldn't be doing that, and that's not fair to our residents, or to put ourselves in debt in any way, which is why I'm seconding Councilmember Weaver's motion, because it's the only fiscally responsible thing to do. It's less than the staff recommends. They believe that we should at least have enough reserve to cover our major water main break. This 4, 4, 4, 4 does not, and people need to understand that, that doesn't even put us into territory where if we have a major water main break, where we flood a major business, where we're going to be able to comfortably, we're going to be able to cover our damages. This just floats us, and in three years, puts our reserves, at least takes it out of the negative territory, and still doesn't bring our reserves anywhere close to the city council mandated policy of where our reserves should be. I think it's fiscally responsible. I don't think it's by any means extravagant. It- I think it's fiscally responsible, I don't think it's by any means extravagant, it, it takes into account the belt tightening that we have as a city and as a utility have been doing, where we are lean, as lean as we can be. We have a new management team under Steve Zern, who I know from watching him for years at Public Works, is an excellent administrator and somebody who takes stretching a dime very, very seriously, and someone who finds cost savings, I think, each and every day, and continues to look for them, which is the other part of being a responsible utility and a responsible business. So as much as I'd love to make, you know, go for the lower rate, it would be nice, but it would be irresponsible to keep us in negative territory. And certainly, we'll put a future council into a terrible situation and put us in jeopardy if something were to happen. And we know we have an aging system, and we try to keep up with it as best we can. I believe we keep up with it better than DWP is able to in Los Angeles, but things happen. We had a water main break on Honolulu not too long ago. So these are inevitable pitfalls of being in the utility business. And if we're not willing to, to keep up with that and to maintain our infrastructure and to cover our costs, we should sell this utility. We should just sell it if we're not willing to make those decisions. If we're so interested in being the nice guy all the time, then we need to, to take stock of that. But I think that this is a fiscally responsible, and it's humane to our residents, and it ensures that they will continue to deliver, to receive water, which is, I think, really tantamount in everybody's mind, and something that we need to be sure that we're able to do.
And, Mr. Mayor, it'll be three years before we're into a positive. So if any mains or anything break because of an earthquake, next three years, you can see that all the red, every single plan is in the red for two years.
And by the way, I would support 4-4-4-3 as well, if somebody makes that motion. I just feel that we need to be in positive territory. I, I can't support 3-3-3-3 because it keeps us in negative territory.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. I'll just point out that in your favorite reality show, the responsible thing to do to solve the problem was to lower the costs, not to increase the, the price of the good. So the, the parallel here is that we're increasing the price of the good right now. We're not lowering the cost.
Well, Mayor Sinanian, you can find a way to lower costs within our utility so that we can keep this down. I'm all ears, but I haven't heard anybody say, here's a way that we can lower our costs. It's great to say, let's just lower our costs, let's just, let's just fire half the workers, or let's just, you know, buy the water cheaper. That's not going to happen. If you can come up with that, I would love to hear it. What is your solution, then, for lowering our costs?
We've already eliminated people.
I understand that, so I'm asking Mayor Sinanian, if he wants to lower the cost, where, how do you want to do it?
The point is, even in your favorite program, you, you keep referring to responsible, being responsible, doing the responsible thing, even the program that you were trying to use as an analogy, the way to solve the problem was not by increasing the value of the good, it was by lowering the cost associated with providing that good. Now, now, I'm not saying that the, there's a way to lower the cost specifically with GWP, there may be, there may be many ways, you know, I, I don't know, maybe that's what we need to be concentrating on. It's a way of thinking, way of thinking of keeping costs down before we even get to the problem of having to somehow fix a problem. That's what I'm talking about.
So, Mr. Zern, have you been, is this something you're ignoring? Is your philosophy to not try to lower costs, as Mayor Sinanian is suggesting?
No, Ms. Friedman, that's, that's not my, my style.
Yeah, I agree, you actually, you absolutely have to keep your costs low. One, one cost that's not going to go down is the price of water, by the way, if imported water, which is primarily what we use.
Which is more reason for us to be, be very careful in raising these, these rates.
That's going to continue to go up, and with this drought, this is a very valuable commodity that has value. It's not something that's going to be like in the old days where it's practically free. And people are going to have to stop thinking of it that way, that because, less and less so, but every now and then it falls from the sky, doesn't mean that it's free to deliver it to people's homes. And I think in Southern California, people realize that. I mean, people are very smart now about water, and they see it as the commodity it is, and it's a commodity that's going, like all other valuable commodities, is going to continue to be increasingly expensive, at least in the near future. Hopefully someday that won't be the case, but for now, it's, it's something that we have to think of as being very valuable and not dirt cheap. And that's just the reality we live in in Southern California.
Mr. Mayor, I made a motion, she seconded, why don't we take a vote?
We can have...
Get rid of this one if there isn't three votes.
Mr. Najarian wants to say a few words?
And I'll be refined, and we've had multiple sessions on this. I appreciate staff's effort, as well as the folks from Bartles and Wells, to sort this all out for us. I would support the 3-3-3-3. If I knew that over the course of four years, that there would not be a significant event which would require us to get into the reserves. This council, several years ago, set the reserve policy at, what was it, 11 million or something?
Yes, sir.
11.3. And the reason we did that was to have somewhat of a cushion for any unforeseen events. But, but no one can do that. And speaking of TV shows, one of my favorite shows is...
Jeez.
Chasing classic cars. And our water agency is a classic car. Things go wrong. We've got galvanized pipes that could be on the verge of breaking. There are valves which could be on the verge of sticking. We're not dealing with a new system, such as, you know, there are some cities out there that have much newer systems, Santa Clarita, let's say, or, or some others, that, that could place a, for which their council could place a greater confidence in not needing quite the reserve that, that we have in Glendale. Another factor that concerns me, aside from the general age of our infrastructure, is the stress that the current drought is putting on the system. I know that last year and the, and the year before, the city of LA, the DWP, was experiencing a significant number of pipe failures. Some hydraulic engineers attributed those number of failures due to the reduced water rate and water flow that those pipes were undergoing. They had, I think, implemented the three-days-a-week watering. And although there isn't a clear cause-and-effect relationship to that, I think there's a, it's something that we need to look at. And if that is the case, I do think we need to have a little more reserves than just, I mean, the 3-3-3-3, you know, let's say it's just breaking even, and I think we need to have more, because I think, to be prudent, we need to expect the unexpected, and expect lines that need to be repaired, valves that need to be replaced, blowouts and failures and everything else that can go wrong with the system, because we do have an aging system. So I would, I don't want to hit it, stick it to the residents. In my heart of hearts, I wish it would be a zero increase. I wish we could roll back our rates, but we just can't do that. We do have a business to run, and, and as I said the other day, our utmost obligation is to ensure the sustainability and viability of that. So I'm, I'm going to have to trend towards the, the 4-4-4-4 increase, and still cross my fingers and hold my breath and hope that nothing serious occurs, because a 4.4 reserve at the end of four years really is nothing. I mean, a significant, I mean, for Pete's sake, imagine it blows out in the Americana. I mean, can you imagine the, the claims that could be made in that, or in the Galleria, or under the Galleria, or under the Americana?
The flood of Rogers.
I mean, a sinkhole could be very, very expensive. So I'm still not breathing a complete sigh of relief, but balanced with my concern for the residents and the rates, I think I would have to go with the 4-4-4-4.
Are we going to move the question?
No, no statements, okay? We can take a roll call now.
Yes. 4-4-4, 4-4-4-4 percent annual increase?
1A1.
Yes. Councilmembers, Devine?
No.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
No. Next, 1A B, I'm sorry, 1B?
Oh, that's a drought period of either six months, yeah.
The proposal is to suspend the drought rate for six months.
Six months, I'll move 1B.
Before we, before someone seconds it, so we have this authority to just suspend these? I mean, this isn't some kind of a mandate that comes down on us and we're obligated to...
We're mandated to, to conserve, we're not mandated to set a certain rate for that.
Okay, so we can conserve by other means, kind of a thing?
Right.
Okay.
But 1B?
Does someone second that motion?
I will second it, but I want to make sure not to be lost in our technical discussion is, is this issue, which is delaying the imposition, that certainly we are within our, our rights to force the 20 percent, is it 20 percent?
No, it's 30 percent.
For Phase Two. To force the reduction on the residents by further increasing the rates, but we are not doing that. This is going to be a suspension of that for six months, and we're throwing it on the residents to do their part in reducing their usage. So we are not forced to, to come back in six months and try and deal with this at that time.
Correct. Again, the, the rates, the, as part of the rate plan, the drought rates are a part of that, but this would be a six-month suspension, and if the council wants to hear at the end of the six months to, whether to continue that or not, it could do so at that time.
We would, we would be coming back to you at mid-year budget in February 15 to tell you the impact, you know, if it's a, if it's a wet El Nino winter, the drought could be lifted, you know, who knows, but we'd give you that progress report.
So I, I, that is my second, my comment, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item?
Happy to move 1C to give money back.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?[1782.46]